Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Saco City Council to order from Monday, October 25th, 2021. Let the record reflect the time is 6:30. With that, I'd like to recognize all members are present with the exception of Counselor Hatch, who did inform me earlier that he will not be with us this evening. Therefore, I'd like to invite everybody to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. There is nothing under the General Section. That brings us to Item 5, Committee Correspondence to Council. Any committee correspondents this evening? Counselor McPhail?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just would like everyone to know that we are getting ready to start, or should say we're continuing the planning and getting ready to start for the 17th Annual Dyer Library Festival of Trees this year. We are going to have two preview parties. One will be Saturday, November 20th, in the afternoon from 1:30 to 3:30, and then there will be the evening gala from 6:30 to 8:30. The official kickoff is the 26th of November through the 29th of December. We also have other items throughout that event. Tea with Mrs. Claus on Saturday, December 11th. Santa Claus will be there on Sunday, December 12th, and I will provide more updates as we get closer. If you are still interested in sponsoring or having a tree, you can contact the library directly. And again, I will provide more updates when we get ready for the tickets for the two preview events.
Thank you very much. The Festival of Trees is always a fun time. Counselor Johnston, do you have your hand up?
Thank you. Counselor Hatch was originally going to read, I guess, some notes about our traffic safety meeting, so with him not here, I'll go ahead and read what he wrote. "The Traffic Safety Committee met last Thursday evening. Here are some meeting highlights. Parking changes will be made on Beach Street from the corner of Winter to 74 Beach Street to help alleviate driveway blockage and improve trash pickup in that area, primarily due to parking for pickleball activities. The committee continues to field multiple requests for additional speed limit signage in crosswalks. Consideration is always given to the appropriate use of both in the areas requested. Each is fully vetted by the committee, but there are valid reasons why some requests are not granted. The committee is waiting to receive traffic safety data to alleviate or evaluate recently installed calming measures on Tasker Street, North Street, and Maple Street. Once received, it will analyze the data at a future committee meeting. Excessive vehicular speed calming measures and related pedestrian public safety concerns continue to be a high priority for the committee. The public has courage to attend Traffic Safety Committee meetings held at City Hall every month on the third Thursday of the month beginning at 6:00 p.m. The next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, December 16th." Thank you.
Thank you. Any further committee correspondents from council? Moving on to Item 6, Public Comment. If there's any members of the public who would like to speak on any item, please come forward and be heard. State your name and address for the record, and please keep it to three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Kevin Roach, 18 Vines Road. I'm here to speak for our organization, Save Our Shore Saco Bay, and give the council and yourself, Mr. Mayor, an update. I don't know if I can compete with the Santa Claus news, but I feel like there is that type of good news to share with you, so. First off, I know that in 60 to 90 days, we're all working on the Army Corps and their expected project partnership agreement, so hopefully we're all prepared for that and be ready to negotiate and see what they come back with. This is a unique situation, but that is not the only thing we're supportive of you and working. Again, a thank you to all the unit of support that we've gotten that so far. As many of you know that through Donna Bailey's help, we got $20,000 to Living Shoreline Solutions for a study, a study that will happen November 9th to 11th onsite for wave attenuation devices that if the Army Corps could not come through or would not include it in the project, that these wave attenuation devices can allow sand in but not allow sand to escape, and for potentially a lot less money in case that becomes the solution. But first, we need the study. So through Attorney General settlement funds, we got that $20,000, and we'll keep everyone posted of events and timing on the shoreline if you'd like to even come down there. Might have an event down there, I don't know, but we're just getting that specifics done. And then finally, we have been working on trying to pursue a shared dredge, and a big thanks to the communities around us that sent letters of support into the York County, and Brian for sending his letter specifically, and then for our mayor to come out, all the way out to Alfred, and speak and show support that, you know, we would potentially be a host community, and the commissioners were fully supportive. If we can form partnerships with other communities, so I do ask that if this council can be supportive of these pursuits. There's no hard commitment yet until we gather, and we have until budget time until March to formulate what that full plan would be. But it was very much a nice surprise to get, it can't hurt to ask, right? And we asked for $1.8 million for a dredge out of the $40 million, and sometimes government can surprise me, and there is my Santa Claus reference to you. So, thank you very much, and hope to be up here with more news on this later. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further public comment? See, nobody seeking recognition. Moving on to, there are no minutes to approve, so that brings us to Item 8, Consent Items. There are two items under the consent agenda. One is Item A, approved November and December meeting dates, and then Item B is confirm the mayor's appointment to the Intercultural Competency and Awareness Committee, ad hoc committee of Andrew Smith. Is there a motion to approve the consent items?
Approved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Berman, any discussion on the consent items? Roll call vote on the consent items. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Brings us to Item 9, Action Items. Item A is one reading, main purse change, page 5 in your packet, and that is going to be Counselor Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To remain competitive and retain our workforce, it is important to offer comparable retirement packages. In the provisions of 5, MRS 18252(c), as enacted by PL 2021, Chapter 286, as allowed by Maine-Purse Rule, Chapter 803, for its non-participating employees with optional membership who previously declined to participate in Maine-Purse, eligible employees must declare their intent to enroll by November 1st, 2021. However, implementation date has been set to July 1st, 2022. In the Public Safety Support Union Contract, the City Council approved the adoption of Special Plan 3(c) for dispatchers effective July 1st, 2022. Order that the City of Saco will vote to adopt the provisions of 5, MRS, Chapter 18252(c), PL 2021, Chapter 286, as allowed by Maine-Purse Rule, Chapter 803, effective November 1st, 2021, and to see if the City of Saco will vote to change its plans for its full-time dispatchers effective July 1st, 2022 for future service only. The city agrees, 1, to adopt the provisions of 5, MRS, Chapter 18252(c), as enacted by PL 2021, Chapter 286, as allowed by Maine-Purse Rule, Chapter 803, for its non-participating employees with optional membership who previously declined to participate in Maine-Purse, eligible employees, and to comply with the following requirements. A, to offer by November 1st, 2021, the opportunity to join Maine-Purse prospectively to all its eligible employees who have been employed for five years or more, to advise these employees that this will be their only opportunity to join, and to provide Maine-Purse with documentation of each eligible employee's election. And B, beginning in 2022, to annually offer eligible employees who have been employed for less than five years, and in 2022, eligible employees who have reached five years of employment between November 1st, 2021, and November 1st, 2022, the opportunity to join Maine-Purse on a prospective basis during an open enrollment period, goes from September 1st through November 1st, and to provide Maine-Purse with documentation of each election made by eligible employees under this provision. And C, to withhold employee contributions for employees who join under this provision on an after-tax basis, and permit them to Maine-Purse beginning with program implementation on July 1st, 2022. 2, to adopt Special Plan 3(c) for its full-time dispatchers for service rendered after June 30th, 2022. Service rendered by dispatchers before July 1st, 2022 remains under Regular Plan AN. To continue to provide Regular Plan AN for all non-union full-time employees. 4, to continue to provide Special Plan 3(c) to its full-time firefighters and emergency medical services workers, as it has been since July 1st, 2020. 5, to continue to provide Special Plan 3(c) to its full-time police officers, as it has been since July 1st, 2019. 6, to continue to exclude all other employees, including City Council members, from participating in the plan. And 7, to authorize Brian Keanrath, City Administrator, to sign the amended agreement between the city and the Maine Public Employees Retirement System. I move to approve the article. Motion approved as written.
Motion's been made by Counselor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Brings us to Item B, a public hearing, an amendment to zoning uses and definitions, page 7 in your packet. Counselor McPhail?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since Saco's new zoning ordinance was adopted earlier this year, staff discovered that several land uses are defined but not shown in the permitted and conditional use table, Table 3-3, and several uses shown in Table 3-3 do not have definitions in the ordinance. After holding a public hearing on September 14th, 2021, the Planning Board voted to recommend adoption of changes to the uses and definitions sections of the ordinance proposed by the staff. These changes include limiting registered medical marijuana dispensaries, which are currently allowed in the D Downtown and GB General Business zoning districts via conditional use approval, to only the I Industrial and BI Business Industrial zoning districts. Counselors discussed three components of these amendments during the October 4th meeting, motor vehicle fueling station, farm stands, and flea markets, and the regulation of disc golf courses. Referring to Saco's comprehensive plan and discussion held prior to adoption of the current zoning ordinance, revising the proposed amendments by prohibiting motor vehicle fueling restations from the GB General Business zoning district was suggested by the council. Staff agrees and have revised the proposed amendments to incorporate this change. Regulation of farm stands and flea markets is a less simple matter. The counselors noted that these uses are currently prohibited in downtown and general business districts, but that these uses may appropriate, be appropriate for these areas in certain cases. Staff believes a distinction should be made between temporary markets, such as seasonal farmer markets and holiday events, and permanent retail stands or market facilities. Where a weekly, monthly, or seasonal market or event may be desired in Saco's downtown or business district, a fixed farm stand or flea market facility may not be. Saco's zoning ordinance currently lacks provisions for temporary uses. Planning staff recommends consideration of such provisions in the future. The current zoning ordinance includes golf courses in the land use table but does not define them, a condition which the proposed amendment will correct. Counselors suggested that it may be appropriate to revise the definition of golf course to include disc golf facilities. Golf courses are regulated separately from outdoor recreational facilities in Saco's zoning ordinance and are not allowed in the same zoning district. Since golf courses and outdoor recreational facilities are not allowed in the same zoning districts, and disc golf courses may have physical and operational characteristics that differ from golf courses, planning staff believes this topic warrants further discussion and may be outside the scope of the amendments that are currently proposed. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Gunn. Any discussion on opening the public hearing? Roll call vote to open the public hearing. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0 to open the public hearing at 6:45 p.m. Those wishing to speak before the City Council, please come forward and be heard. State your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. My name is David Toomey. I live at 32 North Avenue. I'm also Director of Code Enforcement. While you have in front of you tonight doing changes in Table 3.3, also the next item, which is the industrial zone, I would like to suggest a correction that came across my desk recently. I can put it through future amendments, but it's minor, so I'm hoping that you can add amendment to that. If you look on page 42 of your packet, you will look at warehouse and distribution facilities, and if you go over, it is permitted use in the BI, and it is a conditional use in I. The last zoning had it permitted in the industrial zone and conditional in the I-2 zone. It got reversed. I'm not sure why. I think it's just an oversight. So that puts everything in industrial zone as non-conforming use as of today, and I have to enforce it that way. So I'm hoping while you're making other changes to this table, you could do that tonight.
Director Toomey, so what you're looking for on page 42 is the warehouse and distribution facility where it says "C" as a conditional use under the I-zone and HB-zone. You would like to change those.
The BI is permitted today. It should be conditional, so you just swap those two out. Make it permitted in the I-zone and conditional on the BI-zone.
Thank you.
Because that's the way it was written in the last ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Avila. I'm from 172 Highland Ave, Gardner. I'm here to address you with regard to the medical marijuana zoning amendments and definitions, and I just wanted to say that my business partner and I are interested in opening a medical marijuana storefront in a properly zoned location, and in line of these changes that would not affect our properly zoned location located 22 Industrial Park Road, we ask that you consider overturning the moratorium so that we may pursue our business ventures here in Saco. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any further public comment on this item? Seeing nobody coming forward, Counselor McPhail?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to close the public hearing.
Motion's been made to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Gunn. Any discussion on closing the public hearing? Counselor Johnston?
No, it's specific to closing the public hearing, but as far as moving forward with setting the final reading, I guess you could close the public hearing first, and then I could make my comment.
Thank you. Anything further on closing the public hearing only? Roll call vote. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.[1176.14]
Second by Councilor Johnston to set final reading for. Was that November 8th? November 8th, thank you. Okay, any discussion? Councilor Johnston.
Thank you. Starters, I appreciate staff having addressed the issues I brought up several weeks ago. I think, again, that aligns with the comp plan in relation to motor vehicle fueling stations in the GB. I do have a question for the administrator about what the outcome of the planning board's decision on the medical marijuana dispensary application on Main Street. I think that is a germane question because it kind of ties into, depending on their outcome, may impact how I move forward on this.
Thank you. City Administrator Kenrath, do you have an answer for that?
I did touch base with the city solicitor today. We were supposed to catch up early this week sometime for me to get an opportunity to hash out some more of that. But if you'd like, I can circle back with you all via email after I talked with him early this week and some of these. And if you have specific questions or specific things you'd like me to talk to them about, please feel free to shoot those over to me as well.
All right, thank you. I mean, I will say, I'm a bit disappointed that we didn't have more public participation in this. I mean, I'm not certain if maybe it wasn't broadcast or communicated well to the members of the public about, you know, what zones we're putting this into. I know, I personally, I don't know about other councilors, but I have had feedback on this particular issue. So there's obviously another week or so, I guess two weeks, to get your opinion to counsel. I mean, I just think it's key to point out to those, you know, at home that's watching that maybe didn't have the opportunity to read the entire packet or whatnot, that with passage of the ordinance as it's written, at least the way I understand it, all types of commercial marijuana-related businesses, so anything that's not for personal use, is going to be regulated to the industrial zone and the BI zone. Additionally, based on the definition, again, as I read it, there will be no standalone retail operations. You'll have to partner with or be a part of a medical marijuana operation and on that same lot. So I think that's, you know, something that should be pointed out to people. So if you're an individual out there that desires to have a retail storefront, I guess, is, forgive me if I'm getting the terminology wrong, but the way I would describe it as a standalone retail business under this current ordinance that, as presented, it wouldn't be allowed. So, again, I just, I wanted to vocalize that to people so they could understand it. And, I mean, ultimately, you know, council will decide how we, you know, go moving forward. But if there's people out there that are, you know, have an opinion, I'm certainly willing to hear it. I prefer not to operate in the vacuum, and I think council feels the same way. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Final reading set for November 8th. Okay, no further discussion. Roll call vote, Council Archer.
Aye.
Councilor Purdy.
Yes.
Councilor Gunn.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor McPhail.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero. That brings us to Item C, a public hearing zoning ordinance amendment on industrial zone uses, page forty-five in your packet. Councilor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On April 12th, 2021, the city council adopted a new zoning ordinance. In this updated ordinance, three industrial zones, the I-1, I-2, and I-3 districts, were combined into a single district, the I district. While this change simplifies the ordinance, several uses that were previously allowed in the business and industrial parks were not allowed in the new ordinance and are therefore no longer allowed. In order to allow for more flexibility within the industrial district and to increase alignment with the current and intended uses in this area, staffers requesting the council consider adding eight uses to the industrial district. Please refer to the attached copy of Table 3-3 for the specific changes requested for consideration. Planning Board held a public hearing on the proposed amendments during its June 29th, 2021, meeting. After the public hearing, the Board voted to recommend approval of the amendment with the additions of schools, public and private, as a permitted use in the BI and I districts. The change was in response to staff's request to allow schools in this area to be consistent with the business park covenant amendments allowing schools as an emergency use. This was also public comment to the Board requesting that private schools remain in allowed use. The Board voted unanimously to forward a positive recommendation for the amendments as proposed. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Council McPhail. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Berman to open the public hearing. Any discussion on open the public hearing? Roll call vote to open the public hearing. Council Archer.
Aye.
Council Purdy.
Yes.
Councilor Gunn.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Council McPhail.
Yes.
Council Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero to open the public hearing. The public hearing's now open at 6:56 PM. Those members wishing to speak on this item, public hearing zoning ordinance amendment on industrial zone uses, please come forward and be heard. State your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to three minutes. Seeing that there's nobody looking to be recognized, Councilor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to close the public hearing and schedule the final reading for. Sorry.
Technology when you lose your spot.
Yeah, my computers. There we go, I'm sorry. I move to close the public hearing and schedule the final reading for November 8th, 2021.
Motion's been made by Councilor McPhail. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnston to close the public hearing and set final reading for November 8th, 2021. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, Council Archer.
Aye.
Councilor Purdy.
Yes.
Councilor Gunn.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor McPhail.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero. That completes the action items for this evening, brings us to Item 10 of the agenda, that is, new business. There is one item, Item A, Order of Discontinuance of Gull Avenue Public Easement, page fifty-two in your packet. And I believe we will hear from Deputy Assessor Kate Kern on the reason for this item coming before us.
Hello, Mayor and councilors. I've not done this before, so am I being asked to read this?
No, so this is a time for you to present any facts or items. It's kind of a presentation time for staff members to inform council of anything they might want to.
Okay.
Tune in on or kind of be directed toward.
So I worked with this item with Tim Murphy. It's really a procedural matter. It's a, for anyone that doesn't know what a paper street is, it's exactly what it says it is. It's a street that doesn't exist except on paper. And the particular one we're looking at is Gull Avenue, which is in between 203 and 207 Seaside Ave. And it's been there probably in paper since the 1930s or whenever this subdivision was formed. As far back as the 70s, both of the abutters to this paper street requested that the city discontinue it, or, in other words, just relinquish any future public easements or anything like that it might want to have. So it wasn't done correctly back in 1989. And in your packet, you'll find the list of Saco Street Directory from 1989, which Gull Avenue is on there. And it was vacated at that time. So the final piece to actually finish and put closure to this item was to have the city actually state that they wanted no, nothing more to do with it, no public easement, and then order that by the city council and have it recorded in the registry. So it's really just a process to clean this up. Both of these abutters have wanted this to happen for quite some time. Both have their driveways on this paper street. One has a garage, another has their septic system, so it's really a matter of, and you can see that clearly on the map that's included from the GIS view, you can see where, for this particular paper street, there's, it's not likely that the city would want to hold on to any kind of future public easement through there. So it's really just a, just a process to finish up what was started years ago. I hope that makes sense.
Thank you for that. Any questions? Council Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a lot of times, we have different interests that the city departments have. I'm kind of confused on right now why we're trying to give away power when we're actually, because when you have rights and things like that, that's considered power. Why are we trying to relinquish that power? Specifically, the first thought that came to my mind was, we're trying to potentially build a sidewalk there. So we're going to relinquish the power of our rights to the property and then ask to buy it back or ask to give it back to us. The other part is, the city, pretty much in my understanding of government, is that we operate in perpetuity. So what is the harm to keeping it? We have rights to this land whether or not we use it. What's the point of giving away those rights when in the future, we may, again, we don't know, but we may need to buy it back? It is a paper, and I understand the term of that.
Right.
But those paper roads are to protect the city's interest in the long term in case the city ever wants to build upon it, use it. To be honest, it could be, I don't know what the access is, I'd have to read deeper, but it could be a way for citizens to actually have access to the beach.
Well, I think that Tim Murphy covers that in here, where he talks about how there is parking lot down the street.
Mm-hmm.
There is, there is no actual parking on seaside, so people wouldn't really be able to park there and.
But access is different. Someone can ride a bike. We're literally in the discussions of possibly funding a few million-dollar sidewalk project down there. That would actually give more access to this area.
But the sidewalk would not cut through the middle of their property to the ocean.
No, but it would cut across the property on where the road itself is.
And that would be whatever you would do to attain the footage to get your sidewalk is the normal process you would follow.
Mm-hmm. But what's the point of giving away rights when you don't have to?
The point of this particular case is that both the abutters, as far back as the 50s, began to build on the paper street.
Mm-hmm.
Their driveways are on the paper.
Were they allowed to build on the paper street? This is our property.
It's really not our property. It's our option to have some kind of, some kind of say in the future of it with, like a public easement. But in this, this is kind of a different case because, like many other paper streets, people don't even know that there's one in between their property and their neighbors.
Mm-hmm.
It's wooded area. It's forty feet by whatever the old streets used to be. So in this particular case, back in the 50s, a garage was built. Their driveways are on it.
Mm-hmm.
Their septic system is on it. They deeded the property to each other. They're now being taxed on that extra 20 feet of ocean frontage, which brings in an additional tax value for the city, a benefit. I really don't know, I think this is a little different than most paper streets because of the amount of work that's gone into these abutters creating the space for themselves and also asking the city back in 1970 to please discontinue it. I don't, I can't speak for why it didn't get done back then, but you can see in 1989, the city did vacate it. We did say, we don't want it. We just didn't do the last process, which is record something that says, we really don't want any future public easement in it, we're going to take care of this by statute, which is a four-step process. And that's laid out by the legislature. So we have to follow that process in order for it to be legal. So it really is a matter of process.
So it has to go through the whole process again because thirty years, give or take. It's a new council, we make a new decision.
Well, this got.
Because it never ended.
This got carried through in 1997 to 2017. The legislature said, back in 97, you have 20 years to take care of your paper streets in the state. In 2017, we got rid of, or took care of, probably three-quarters of them. And there, in your packet, you'll see there's a one-page sheet of the ones that are left to clean up. So at some point, the city will have to do something with these paper streets. This one in particular is just, they're being taxed on it, they're using it, they've deeded it to each other. It's really a process at this point. I don't know how else to.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Johnston.
Thank you. I mean, I certainly can appreciate the request of the property owner, but I've been here before. I sat on the council in 2017 when we addressed the paper streets. And while it's news to me that in 89, the city council at the time abandoned the street, it did maintain that public access easement. My understanding with that is that it was intentional. So, I mean, I guess my issue, and I guess it's similar to Council Archer's, is that the access to beachfront is being taken away from the public all over the state of Maine. So while I understand that the current property owners have, you know, a driveway and a garage, it looks like, in the middle of this easement, there's no way of predicting the future. I mean, a storm could come and wipe out those properties, and we could be left with the situation of, you know, re-envisioning that area. So I understand, you know, with Mr. Murphy saying that, oh, today it doesn't have, you know, great access. But, I mean, I think back to 2017, and I specifically remember with all of these, because there's another one to the north, I believe, that Stickney's own, it's the same situation. In fact, I think there's another one further down. And I know that former mayor Mishu, myself, and several councilors back in 17, really decided to keep them as paper streets unbeknownst that we apparently had already eliminated this particular one because of those accesses, easements. So, I mean, I understand it's a little bit different, but I just look, to me personally, I think that the city should maintain this one and really all of them going forward in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate, did, in talking with Tim in preparation for this to come before council, was there any talk about adverse possession, where they've adversely possessed the property for more than 20 years in accordance with the law?
He did tell me that they, each abutter owns this property in fee simple.
Thank you. Councilor Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not so concerned with Gull Avenue in particular, but if we look at page 74 in the list of paper streets, as Council Johnston was just referring to, we can see a handful of paper streets. Waterloo, Garnet, Utah maybe, or Utah, Delphi, they're also, you can see them also on the Google Maps if you look at that way also. I guess my question is, why we're dealing with Gull Avenue separate from these other paper streets that are just to the north and south of it, and how it would be fair to the neighbors if we remove the right-of-way on one and not the others? So I guess that's one question. And the second question is, are there impacts on the public right to the beach that are preserved by these right-of-ways that they would lose if we abandoned them?
I can only speak to Gull Avenue right now. The reason this particular one came to light is because one of the abutters had a building permit for work done on their home, and I pulled the file. And in the file, I saw all of the history on this paper street. There'd been a plan drawn out where it had been split down the center line, and then the 7,000-something square feet went to each abutter. Each one received that much. They, in fact, deeded it to each other. Actual driveways and buildings and septic systems were built on that paper street. So this isn't one that was likely to look to me like the city was going to retain any kind of right-of-way through there without destroying their property. And so to me, I, it meant more in real estate tax dollars because these paper streets, nobody's paying taxes on those. Nobody's being assessed for them. And this is 20 feet of ocean front for each abutter, which is a fair share.
I appreciate that.
If you have an oceanfront property.
I wonder if we shouldn't be considering the same fate for all the right-of-ways together. And I guess I'm also a little bit concerned if an abutter doesn't like the city right-of-way, if we remove it simply because they build on it or otherwise ignore it. I think that sets a dangerous precedent that I'm concerned about.
I think this is a unique situation.
I appreciate that.
As I look down at the other paper streets, I don't see it quite this way with this much development on the paper street.
I appreciate that, thank you.
And like I said, the file is, goes way back to 1975 where they, and here's the plan. So to my thinking, to enjoy this paper street square footage as their own, it seemed only fair that they pay the real estate taxes on it. So after conferring with Tim Murphy and Brian, the city manager, I, we went ahead and assessed him for it.
Thank you.
And any further? Council Arch?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just through some quick research through the IowaState.edu, it's obviously an academic resource, is that it's a well-known rule that a private landlord cannot assert a claim of adverse possession against a government. And we are a government, so it doesn't apply in this standard. Again, I would revert that information to our city attorney just to confer, but.
This is, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it's not, it's not ownership of the real, we don't, the city does not own that paper.
Mm-hmm, but we have rights to it, and we own the rights. Rights are something you can own.
Only if you, if you assert that right and supposedly in a certain amount of time. I mean.
It's not applicable to government. It is to private citizens. So if you build a shed on my property and I say nothing for 20 years, then they can have it. It doesn't apply to government. And again, I just refer that back to an extralegal opinion, but seems pretty clear under 43 USC 1068. And that's govinfo.gov.
That's why I asked the question.
Yeah. So, no, I did the research on the spot, so, just so, because I had the same question once you said it.
But I think what Ms. Kern is saying is that the property is already owned by virtue of what's already transpired, that they already own the property, and we just own a potential right-of-way through it, not the actual property itself.
No, understood that, but we have the rights.
Any further questions? Okay, is there any counselor that would like to be a resource on this item? Councilor Berman, I'll defer to you first since it's your ward, but I'll let you answer.
I'll take it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So council, if you have any questions, please direct them to City Administrator Kenrath so that we can have those questions answered the next time this comes up for discussion. Kate, thank you very much for coming up.
Sure.
And sorry we grilled you with questions on your first time coming up to the council, but welcome to the show.
Sure.
Okay, that handles new business for this evening. City Administrator, we are at Item 11, the administrative update.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a thank you to everyone involved in the Pumpkin Harvest Festival this weekend. It was a great success, we had a good turnout. And if you haven't seen the crosswalk at Main Street and Pepperell Square, check that out, it's now painted with lobster buoys. And thank you to all the volunteers involved in that also. An upcoming election reminder, the last day of requests and absentee ballot is Thursday, October 28th, unless you have a special circumstance. We will have extended hours here at City Hall on October 28th from 7:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. to accept vote registration applications as well as issue absentee ballots. And of course, the polls will be open November 2nd from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And you may also register there on Election Day. Just an update on absentee ballot counts, I just got this from our city clerk, Michelle Hughes. As of right now, we are at 1695 issued ballots, and we have 780 ballots returned and accepted. Reminder, tomorrow from 3:30 to 5:00, we'll be having a session of public open office hours here on the second floor of City Hall. Of course, all residents and local business owners are welcome and encouraged to attend. And I would like to welcome also a new employee that is joining us this week, our Deputy Finance Director Megan Levine will be joining us here with the city. Megan comes to us from the town of Lisbon and has a number of years of municipal experience in finance as well as human resources, so we welcome Megan to our team and wish her great success here with the city and assisting with some of the large workload we have in the Finance Department right now. So welcome, Megan, and thank you.
Thank you, City Administrator Kenrath. Any questions for City Administrator Kenrath? Seeing no questions, moving on to Item 12, council discussion and comment. Any council discussion and comment this evening? Council Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was outreach by the Young School PTO. They are having a On the Wild Side event this Friday, 10/29. So one, it's for the public information to know that it's there for the young school students, but also that they are requesting five people to help volunteer in that morning to move five bounce houses from Exile Sports over to the field, the young school field at the morning of the event. So they are looking for volunteers. They can outreach me, marcher@socomaine.org, and I can forward you to the appropriate contact.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further council discussion and comment? Councilor Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regards to council business, I remain somewhat confused about the amendment process we're following. For example, in Action Item B today, several councilors suggested amendments last time, and according to the item commentary, some were incorporated and some were not. I continue to believe it would be more clear, transparent, and easier for the public to follow if the amendments were presented separately for votes by council and adopted only following a positive vote by council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Berman. City Administrator Kenrath, can you make note of that request? Thank you.
Yes, we'll follow up.
Any further council discussion and comment? And I do just want to take a moment to reiterate what City Administrator Kenrath said and thank Saco Main Street, the Conservation Commission, and so many other groups that helped to make the Harvest Festival a great day. A lot of people were out. I think we actually might have even set some records as far as attendance in the downtown area. So thank you again to Saco Main Street that did all the work in preparation for, and then all the volunteers that helped get us to where we are today. So thank you. With that, Item 13 of the agenda is executive session. Is there a motion to enter executive session? Any counselor want to make the motion to enter executive session?
Be it ordered that the city council enter into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title I, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6. E, consultation with legal counsel.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilor McPhail, second by Councilor Johnston, to enter executive session for an update with legal counsel. Any discussion? Roll call vote to enter executive session. Council Archer.
Aye.
Councilor Purdy.
Yes.
Councilor Gunn.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor McPhail.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero to enter executive session at 7:19. Executive session will be downstairs in the conference room, downstairs in the conference room. room. Is there a motion to exit executive session? Counselor Johnston, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. A discussion on exiting executive session? Roll call vote, Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Item 14, any report from executive session?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
No report. Bring us to item 15, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Discussion on adjournment? Roll call vote, Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0 to adjourn at 7:43 p.m. Have a wonderful evening, everyone.